Let's, uh, are you ready? Okay. We will call the Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 Reno County Commission meeting to order. We'll have a pledge of allegiance to the American flag and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come before you with humbleness, with asking for your wisdom in making decisions that affect all of the people, citizens of Reno County. We thank you very much for the moisture you've given us and for the opportunity of freedom that many people have provided under your guidance for us. Be with those who serve the county and provide the services for the people of the county. Be with those and keep them safe. We also ask that you give guidance to those folks who are dealing with people who have made a mistake down there and give them the wisdom to bring those people positive attitude. We ask this in your name. Amen. At this time, we'll have some public comments with items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll ask for determinants, ask for any additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Friesen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the commission make an addition to the agenda for an executive session for non-elected personnel.
And that would be at the end of the business items?
Uh, yeah, that'd probably be good since we have other people here.
Okay.
So, um, seven E. Sorry.
Seven E.
Well, can't we do it after the reports and comments or?
I don't, I don't really care.
That's all right.
What would that be?
That would be in eight, I mean nine.
Nine, okay.
I would move we approve the.
Just second, just second, Ron. Let's go on. See, do you have any additions? I don't have any. Randy? All right, now you can do it.
Can I talk? Okay. I'd like to move that we amend the agenda as Commissioner Friesen has made the motion to, to include an executive session at the end of item nine.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. We have consent agenda presented now with vouchers. Planning case number 2021-09, a resolution approving a conditional use permit by E&amp;E Legacy Farms LLC, which is the applicant, is Arc Valley Electric Cooperative Association, Inc., to establish a solar farm located on the south side of East 108th Avenue, approximately 825 feet east of North Sunrise Road. Appointments to the Reno County Council on Aging, a letter to KDOT verifying matching USC 49-5311 funds, a signature authorization to Barbara Lilihan, born for KDOT grant applications, and an item to declare Public Works 2006 Chevy Silverado 1-ton 4x4, a 1996 Landall tandem axle flat trailer, and a Hewlett-Packard LaserJet 4050-end printer as surplus to be auctioned on Purple Wave, and Board of County Commission minutes for September final approval. And I would ask that September 14th minutes be postponed until the next meeting as I didn't have a, I didn't take the chance to look at these until too late to make notice of what I think needs to be a change in the motion on the 14th of September.
But move to approve the consent agenda as amended by the chair.
Your second?
Second.
Move to second to approve the consent agenda as amended by the chair.
Would you explain what, what you're deleting?
Yeah, I don't believe that we got it quite right on the motion to, uh, see if I can find it in here. On that most, my original motion to, uh, wording, I don't think is quite accurate in the September 14th.
Okay, thank you.
Just second. It's the original first motion to direct staff to draft and provide notice. I don't believe that it was a period of one year in there, but that's the, I wanted to review that to make sure we got it accurate before we approved it, so, okay? Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it's fine, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. And I apologize to the minute taker that I didn't get that done on time and also to you. Next on the agenda is the business items, which was planning case number 2021-11, a proposed tax amendment to Article 15-109, two and eight, and Article 17-104, three of the zoning regulations. Mark?
Morning Commissioners, Mark Von Achen, County Planner. In 2016, the regulations were adopted. The current regulations say that any parcel that is less than 40 acres and is wanting to construct a 2,000 square foot accessory structure or a combination of accessory structures that is greater than 2,000 square feet requires a special exception that is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, Board of Zoning Appeal cases do not come to the county commissioners for final consideration, they stay down at that level. Since 2016, we have processed 41 special exceptions. All of these cases have been approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals with little to no comment from the audience or surrounding property owners. The spreadsheet that I attached in your, in your packet will show the breakdown of the special exceptions and the size of the shed that was requested, along with the acreage of the parcel that was subject to the special exception. So, the Planning Commission has been discussing this for several years actually about trying to do an amendment to the regulations, and we have finally accomplished that. The new regulations will say that if you have a two-acre parcel or less, you're still going to be limited to 2,000 square feet of accessory structures without having an approved special exception. The big change is if you've got a parcel that is greater than two acres, you're going to be allowed to have at least 5,000 square feet of total accessory structures before you have to go through a special exception process. That doesn't mean that you are never going to get that special exception or anything, that just means you have to go through and have every due process. That was the, the big change in the regulations here. The Planning Commission still feels like there is a, a need and a desire to regulate large sheds on parcels of land. It serves two purposes, letting people know that, hey, a large shed may be built next to your property, but it also helps put on record that that shed will be used for residential purposes. Now, if they want to do a business out of that shed, that's a conditional use permit application. I also like to point out that if the shed is going to be used for agricultural purposes, even though the parcel may be less than 40 acres, it would be exempt from the regulations. And so what we're really doing is regulating residential accessory sheds. The goal really is to help lessen the workload on, on myself, but more importantly, to not put citizens through a necessary and somewhat lengthy process just to get a permit to build a shed. On September 16th, we conducted a public hearing on this, and nobody spoke in favor or against the regulation amendment and the Planning Commission record approval of that amendment by a four to nothing vote, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions. We had some other clarifications in the regulations just to make sure that we, we know that things like gazelos aren't going to be counted, and we have some things in there about lean-tos as well, so I'll stand for questions on that.
Are there any shed regulations on agriculturally zoned properties?
There are none, no. Agricultural zoned properties or parcels that are 40 acres or more are exempt from this type of regulation. You still have to get a permit from me, it's a no-fee permit and agricultural exemption permit from me, there are no fees, like I said, attached to that, but there's no special exception that a person would have to go through if you own 40 acres or more out there.
I think this has been a long time coming, you've dealt with so many properties that are just a fraction over that, or 400 feet over that, or square feet over that, and it's a long time coming. I'm glad you.
Yeah, I finally had the staff time to be able to sit down and do that. As you said, Commissioner, you know, we've been discussing this for, for years. The public hearings are 10, 15 minutes, it's $250 for an applicant to apply for the special exception, it's a 45-day wait at least because we have to go through the proper notices that are required in statute, and the person gets up there and just says they want to put a residential shed for a RV or what, where to have you, and there's no comments from the audience, and the Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't have comments either, so why, why do something like this? I really challenge the, the Board of Zoning Appeals to give me that scenario where you might have concerns about a type of shed, and, and they came up with this, they felt like, you know, 5,000 square feet is adequate, if you want to go more than that, then we still want to review that. And it's a situation where this hopefully will help lessen the burden on staff a little bit, but if something else needs to be amended, we may be back here in a few years if we find that this isn't working, so.
I agree with the chairman that this is a good amendment. Seems like we're being asked by the people to delete government regulations that aren't necessary, and it sounds like the Planning Commission is in that vein with this suggestion.
Mark, you mentioned 40 acres in your presentation, what, what was that in relation to?
The zoning regulations and the zoning map say that any parcel that is 40 acres or greater is going to be zoned agriculturally, so agricultural parcels are not subject to this special exception regulation. This is only for the residential and village zoning districts.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand in summary, by default, if it's 40 or larger, it's agricultural. Previous to this amendment, any residential parcel that wanted to add a, an accessory building of 2,000 square feet or greater had to come to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Or combination, that's kind of the key. It wasn't so much that they were wanting to build a 40-by-60 building on, on the property. If they wanted to build a, a 20-by-20 building on the property, and that 20-by-20 building in combination with other accessory structures put them over the 2,000 square foot limit, then they're going to the special exception process. And so you could literally be doing a, a 10-by-15 shed, and if you had a, a 40-by-50 on the property, that little 10-by-15 shed puts you over the 2,000 square foot limit, so you're going through a process for a 10-by-15 shed, so that was really what the kicker was with, with this more than anything.
It's keeping me hooked.
Yes.
Well, I agree with the other, my other two commissioners, this is, appreciate the work of the Board of Zoning Appeals, appreciate your work, Mark. I think this is great to have an opportunity to reduce regulations, so thank you for that.
Yes. I think, you know, it had good intentions, this regulation, but I think with all regulations, there were some unintended consequences and, and, you know, there really wasn't any issues with, with these sheds that were being built, they were all for residential purposes, and that was part of the reason why I think we wanted to have that regulation in place to begin with, is to be able to put on record that the shed will be for residential purposes, and so we can still do that at the zoning permit law, we have the administrative level I can verify that, so.
Any further questions? Roll call. Motion to approve, planning case 2021-11?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Move the executive to approve, planning case 2021-11. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Next on the agenda is planning case number 2021-10, a request by Reno County, applicant Reno County Sheriff's Department, to establish a firearms range and training facility on land zoned AG, Agricultural District. The parcel is approximately 20.66 acres of land located on the east side of South Morgan Road, approximately one-half mile north of the intersection of South Mohawk Road and West Blanchard. The address is 1314 South Mohawk Road.
I, Mr. Chair, I'd correct you, it's actually South Mohawk Road, you had said Morgan in the first, first talk, so just make sure we're clear.
It's South Mohawk.
So, yeah, so this is a request by the Sheriff's Department to establish a shooting range and training facility on land that is owned by the county but operated by the landfill. It's going to be right south of where the new landfill facility is currently being constructed. The shooting range is going to be used by the Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies, it is not going to be open to the public. A 40-by-60 building will also eventually be constructed on that property for various training needs of the Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies. The nearest residences, according to documentation that is in your packet, are over a half a mile away. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment did have to review this proposed change in the land use, and they have approved of this area of landfill property being used as a shooting range. The berms will be constructed out there, it'll be at least 26 feet high, and they'll have an overhang of what they call an eyebrow that will help deflect and, and hold back ricochets that those would occur. Sheriff's Department is going to follow all Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and NRA guidelines in the construction of the facility. Facility will be hooked up potentially to public water from the city of Hutchinson, or it will be served by bottled water out there. As you know, you know, they're not going to be able to install a irrigate, or a well out there, not irrigation, but a well out there for drinking water. As of right now, we don't know if the city of Hutchinson is going to approve of the Sheriff's Department being able to hook into that water line. We've been in contact with them, and right now, they're still reviewing that, that request, but just so you know, that they're either going to hook into the city water line or use bottled water out there. They will have an irrigation well out there to help water grass and the trees, you know, out in there, but not going to be a well for drinking water purposes. The Health Department will also assist the Sheriff's Department in the installation of a wastewater ELO lagoon or in-ground septic system. The zoning regulations do require the facility to provide at least 12 parking spaces. In the narrative, the Sheriff's Department has said that they're going to have a parking lot that can hold at least 75 vehicles. The Sheriff's Department will be planting trees out there to help cut down on the noise, they're going to be scattered about the perimeter of the property. The facility will have lights for security purposes, but also for training purposes. As you may have read in the narrative, they are looking at doing some nighttime training and other types of light scenario situations where they will be training on that. The area will also be fenced in to provide for added security measures. As far as the factors that you need to use to review all, all planning cases, I would just highlight number two as far as the location, other proposed uses compatible to other land uses. I would remind the commission here that the shooting range is aligned in an east-west direction, so if you look at the site plan provided, you'll see three types of berms that will be constructed out there. The majority of the shooting will occur to the west, the high-powered rifles or sniper rifles, if you will, will be shooting to the east. And I'd also like to point out that Mohawk Road for that portion has been vacated so there will not be any kind of traveling public going between the shooting range and, say, the landfill. This is really at the, at the cul-de-sac, at the dead end of where we vacated Mohawk Road. I'd highlight factor number six is whether the applicant's property is suitable for the proposed use. Staff and the Planning Commission believe that the site will not interfere with any kind of landfill operations, and again, it is not near any kind of residential housing developments or even farm homes. The proposal was reviewed for compliance with the comprehensive plan and found to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, staff recommended approval of the request based off of the nine factors that you see located in my report, and there were four conditions of approval that were attached to the conditional use permit. On September 16th, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and the bulk of my report contains a summary of the proceedings that happened before the Planning Commission at that public hearing. We did have two citizens that voiced concerns mainly about the safety of the public traveling on, on K-96, and the reason they said that, that's, that's the direction that the high-powered rifles will be shooting toward K-96, and that, that interchange right there. They also had concerns about the safety of people visiting the landfill, and then there was also concerns from the public about some of the high-pressure gas lines that are, are in that area. There were some questions that the Planning Commission just had of the person that presented for the Sheriff's Department. Everything was satisfied by the Planning Commission, and so at the end of the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this request by a four to nothing vote based off of the nine factors you see listed and four conditions of approval. So, that's my presentation, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mark, my concerns or questions about this would center around the safety raised by, I believe, Mr. Clark and Mr. Tedder. Do you feel that those safety concerns were analyzed and by the board, not felt to be high enough to negate the proceeding of this?
Yes, yeah.
And what about the concern of the high-pressure gas line?
I think they, they listened to that testimony and, and heard, heard responses from the detective that did the presentation, and I think the Planning Commission is satisfied that, obviously nothing is foolproof, but they're satisfied with the responses that they received at the public hearing, that there shouldn't be a concern. You know, these berms are going to be at least 26 feet high minimum, they may be higher, you're going to probably add another five to seven, 10 feet of an eyebrow or on top of that, so you're looking at something that's over 30-foot high. A lot of it centered on, this is a shooting range, it's not open to the public, this is only for law enforcement personnel, and so the people that are going to be shooting that direction are, are trained professionals, they're not rookies out there with no, no experience in that type of rifle. There might have been a different concern if this, this range had been open to the public, but you're dealing with professionals that know how to handle weapons, so based off of that, the Planning Commission did not feel that that would be a concern.
Okay, I might have a question of the sheriff since he came in the back of the room, is the documents show that these will be trained professionals that will be using this shooting range, so does that mean that a rookie sheriff's officer is trained someplace else other than this range? I'm assuming it must be in, at the state agency, but I'd like your clarification there.
Hey, so Darren Campbell, Reno County Sheriff. So, not every deputy that's a commission deputy for the sheriff's office has a rifle. The only, the only personnel that has a rifle are either patrol or, or above. So, we have a total of 85 deputies that actually wear a badge and work for Reno County Sheriff's Office. There's only about 35 of those that actually might have the possibility of being, having a rifle. These are patrolmen, detectives, civil process, or anybody that would be responding to anything on the street or active shooter, or active shooter incident. So, they also go through at least a 36-hour course that, that takes care of all the marksmanship issues. Shooting up to 400 yards, that's, that's a precision rifle, that's usually our snipers, and that's not necessarily our patrol rifles. So, those are going to be people, you know, they talked about a berm that's going to exceed 26 feet, oh, these are, these are deputies that are actually shooting at two-inch circles, so to exceed, you know, a two-inch circle and.
You're not addressing my question, is the testimony of your staff at the Planning Commission says the only people using this range are pre-qualified, trained people in shooting?
Yes.
And so I wanted you to discuss, they got this pre-qualification at some other range in their early days of training?
No, they could be trained on the rifle. We had to do our own training as well, and we certify our own people by our own rifle instructors. These rifle instructors do go elsewhere for their certifications, but I guess, does that answer your question? We will be training people on their initial qualification, yes.
That's not what your personnel, I think, said at the, at the hearing, that they said that these people were already trained marksmen and that they would be doing ongoing training in this facility. Now, maybe it's not a big deal, but that, if I read the document that Mark presented, your staff said that these people had initial training in this somewhere else, and then they're ongoing so that they're quote "professionals."
Correct. I don't, I don't dispute that they're going to have prior marksmanship experience as far as, they're all trained on the pistol, but not everybody gets a rifle right away until they get their training.
The pistol training has already been done somewhere.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I think I better understand what your representative was stating in the hearing.
Okay, well, I can, I can look over the document and make sure that I, I understand what he's saying as well, I don't want to give you any misinformation. But I, I do believe that.
I think Mark's telling us that the 26-foot berm takes care of the safety.
I would hope so. That exceeds the Department of Energy's recommendation as well as the NRA's.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sheriff, I don't think you're quite done yet, so.
I don't know who would probably use Sheriff, but I, I don't know, necessarily share the same concern that Commissioner Sellers has on training. Hopefully, the trainer has the training necessary to keep anything bad from happening, so I trust that's the case. And I didn't read in here, maybe, maybe, Mark, you could confirm, I think, Mark, you were maybe just referencing the fact that they're trained professionals in their profession, not necessarily that every person on, that there's testimony in here that every person is a trained.
Yeah, I was trying to find the, in the, in my document, the reference, Commissioner Sellers, what you're referring to, I haven't found it yet, but that was, the intent is like, yeah, these are professional trained people, I don't know if I inferred that they were being trained elsewhere.
That's, that's the way I took it, and my. And my, I share that the only other concern I have is the same one that Commissioner Sellers had, was that we have considered proper safety related to the ballistics of the, you know, where the bullets will go if there aren't bullets. And so I think that was the issue that was brought up by the public that was in proximity, right?
Right, right.
To this facility. And you feel like the, again, just to ask the same question, you feel like the testimony, the record shows that we've adequately addressed the safety factors?
Yes.
And that's the opinion of the board?
Yes, that's the opinion of the planning commission, that what is being proposed to be constructed out there will meet or exceed the guidelines from Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and the NRA.
Okay. So the Department of Parks is, they review all firing ranges and...
They don't review them, but they do have guidelines if a citizen or, in this case, a law enforcement agency would want to construct.
Okay.
But they don't actually review them. They weren't sent this document or anything for review and comment, but they do have guidelines.
But we're relying on their particular guidelines for the construction and you feel like they're being followed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question too, but first I have a comment I want to make regarding the relationship here is the fact that I do own property directly east of this proposed gun range. And so I feel that even though I don't have to, and I don't think I'm required to at all, is I want to abstain from the vote on this just because I have property and building within a half-mile or almost a half-mile, a little over. But anyway, with regards to that, I have a question with understanding that the commission knows that this isn't going to be built tomorrow, that it's a long-range plan and it will be done with funds as they become available that are already allocated to the sheriff's department. Some funds are already allocated to sheriff's department, I should say. And so it's not just going to happen immediately because of those funds. My question, and I appreciated Jason Tedder's many questions that he put out here, I think this will save on training cost, but what is your timeframe regarding the proposed hours of training? What are you looking at when this is, when you start using this? What hours and will you be training out there? Will they be daytime, one day a week, five days a week, at night? What can the public out there expect from your hours of training?
Well, I can tell you that as a sheriff's office, we actually have two range days that we hold every month. And we do that on different shifts, and those are usually during the day. But we will be, I would say there's twice a year that we do low light simulations and some different types of shooting out there that might go into the evening. Stuff that occurs in the middle of the night doesn't happen out there. Usually by 10, 11 o'clock, we should be done with any training. There is some different K-9 training that takes place, but that wouldn't have anything to do with firearms. So as far as hours, we say 24 hours per month by us. There are other agencies that relied on us and will probably be using it as well. That's on a case-by-case basis on what their requirements of their agency that, and the scheduling of the range.
Because there are six homes within roughly a half-mile.
Correct.
That, that's my concern at nighttime is the interference there with that.
So...
And I don't happen to live there, I just own some land there.
Yeah, I totally know where your property line is, sir. So the...
Others may not though.
Right. So Detective Van Syke has actually reached out to the National Forestry and is, will be acquiring some trees. They're donating trees to help mitigate some of that noise. That's going to be, so there's going to be trees that we can plant up and around on the borders of the range to help contain that.
That's nice, but it takes 10 to 15 years to grow those trees. Okay.
I understand that.
That was my question.
Sure.
Realistically.
Okay, I'm beating a dead horse here, but Sheriff, I'm reading from page 14 of the document. It says Detective Sergeant Van Syke stated he is never going to say it will never happen. However, a lot of care is taken to make sure it doesn't happen. The people that will be shooting to the east are not rookie people. These people have a lot of experience and have been to a lot of training in order to be able to handle a weapon. The people using this range are not people with little or no training or experience. That's where my comment is.
Right. Yeah, so the training that we put these people through, mostly the snipers that are out there are advanced shooters. They're the ones that are going to be doing the long-range shooting to the east. I think that's what he's talking about. And these are guys, there's basically, we have, in the future, we plan on having at least three of them. The Hudson Police Department has a few which may come out because there's some long-range shooting that's very hard to come by. I think there's only one other range out here that does that, that long or longer in the area. And so these shooters are advanced shooters. They go to advanced courses and they do sniper training, which usually does take place somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
In our earlier visits regarding this, and I think others have too, is some of the things that Mr. Tedder brought up was the fact that sharing ranges with other areas. And I think you looked into that because you covered that topic a little bit for the public.
As far as sharing our range?
Sharing, finding, rather than building one, of going out and trying to find a partnership to share their range or make a financial arrangement to do that.
Sure, sure. There's a couple of different ranges that are here in our area. One of them is ran and owned by the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, which is owned by, ultimately by KU. They own and are facilitated the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center out there. So they have so many classes that go on throughout the year, it would be highly unlikely that we'd be able to get out there and conduct and perform our trains necessary based on their schedule. It's rough enough that we have to do, we have to plan out six months or more possibly to get our driver training out there with them. But we looked at like DOC. DOC has their own range. Again, it puts constraints on them because they require somebody to be out there with us when we utilize their range. It's just their policy and they want to make sure that we're getting everything we need. So it puts constraints on them as well. So by doing our own range, just as we've done for over the past 35 years, it would just make more sense to be able to manage it and train our own people.
That pretty well answers what I needed to know. Make a motion regarding planning case number 2021-10.
Selective.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve planning case 2021-10. Is there any other comments? Only comment I would make sure and let people know when you're going to do things out there in the evening, when it comes about eventually, that they are aware that you may be going into the evening and try to minimize that, so...
We can look at something there.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
I'm going to abstain. Next on the agenda is a proposed resolution to expand the boundary of rural water district 101, which is the Yoder Water District.
Good morning, Commissioner. Don Britton, Director of Reno County Public Works. Mr. and Mrs. Mark Rose Isley would like to expand the Yoder Water District of 101 approximately 860 feet east, further east on Red Rock Road, down a parcel of land of 4.8 acres that they'd like to build a home on. And they'd like to be connected to a public water source and they want to wait for them to be connected to that to expand the water district. And it's my recommendation that you sign the resolution to expand the water district.
It's only for water?
Yes.
Any questions?
Is this district still losing money? It's one of the districts that...
This is a district that doesn't have much money.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it in need of repairs or...
It's in need of...
Am I getting confused with the sewer districts?
No, you're not confused.
Okay.
This water district has a high nitrate problem and I'm looking into drilling a new well and I'm deep in the middle of that and so...
But how many, how many users are on the district today? Well, I guess my only concern or maybe thought is that the 101 people, it may be 102 here in a moment, need to understand that the water rates are probably lower than they're going to be in the future. And, you know, extending this another, how many feet did you say?
860.
860 feet only increases the potential maintenance of the future. And my concern with these small districts is they're, I'll reiterate that I think we need to increase the rates of these districts to fund their operation in the future. And I'd like to see something, maybe that's on the docket.
We're having a water rate study done on that now. It's just about completed. And so when that's completed, then that process will move forward. Because you are correct, the water rates are not high enough.
And we feel like this is sustainable, like we're going to continue to add people that are in proximity to the existing district as they ask for it?
Well, we haven't had this asked very often, but yes, I think this is reasonable and it won't hurt to have additional people paying for this.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
I have some of the same thoughts, the same concerns and so forth, and we've talked about this. And when I checked here quite a while back ago, there was just $27,000 in reserve on this. I don't know what it is now, but it's not, it's not near enough to sustain a water district. And the water supply in that district is tightening up. Please correct me if I'm wrong here, but last time I knew the water supply wasn't, it was getting so tight that it would be hard to get another water user in that district without increasing the water supply. And I think there's plans on talking about the quality and with that quality goes quantity also. Is that not correct? Providing it works, we can find that supply.
I don't know that we have a lack of supply, that we have a lack of quality water.
Okay.
At this point. I think part of our lack of, I think our nitrate problem is, I think I understand why we have that the way our current well is, but there's, you know, finding a place to drill a new well, go through KDHE and everything that they require and stuff, it's an issue that I'm going to resolve.
Yeah, I understand. And there's always that possibility of expanding some new homes in that area and that will help offset that cost of, the adloreum on a new home will help offset the cost of doing that 860 feet eventually. I think that's something I looked at when I was on commission, we looked at, is what, how many years does it take to get paid for that?
Well, the cost of all the piping for the 860 feet to expand this is all on the property owner that's requesting it. It's not going to cost this water district anything. And then they'll have to pay the connection fee once that's done.
Thank you for clarification. What does the commission wish to do with regard to the proposed resolution? And the resolution number is?
That one will be 2021-23.
Chairman, I'd make the resolution, or motion that we accept the direction of the Public Works Director and approve this extension of the water district 101.
All right, second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, one thing, I hope we get to, and I pretty much said it, but I want to say it in a different way. I think it's very important that these utilities are fully self-funded and they aren't subsidized by the entire taxpayer base of the county. And when they become unsustainable, I think we need to look at other solutions. So I just want to be on record to say that we aren't subsidizing any utility, utilities today. Is it even legal?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the commission has heard you and also agrees with you. And that will be a subject that I think we have future plans to discuss for the area residents, correct?
Yes, and I 100% agree with what you're saying. Thank you.
So there'll be a time when we'll be out talking about that.
As soon as this study's done, as soon as we get the recommendations of what the prices should be and all that, then we'll start having the meetings with the public to let them know what is going to happen, which is their rates are going to go up.
All right. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the county commission's salary discussion. I'll turn that over to the person who's...
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering why the Public Works was here, if I could ask to, I have something in my comments that relates to Public Works, if that's okay.
All right, certainly. Don's a very busy man and we don't want to hold him up any more than necessary.
So Randy and Don and I have had some conversation about the 43rd Street Bridge and there's been a few different comments related to visibility. And I, just for the public to hear, Don, could you, could you tell us what you've done to date on that issue?
Well, I, there's a, the view when you're coming from the north on Old K-61 and stopping at 43rd Avenue and you're looking back to the east over the bridge, you have the limited view of what's coming from that direction. And I had hired an engineer for the engineering study from WSP to come and look at this because I don't like the intersection myself. And at this point, they had me move the stop bars where you stop before you look east or west, more closer to 43rd Avenue, so it puts you up there closer so you can see around the bridge. They also had a sign on the east side of the bridge going westbound indicating that there's an intersection. It's flagged and also recommending a 30 mile an hour recommended speed instead of 35. And according to the engineer, they indicate that this makes this intersection safe. And I questioned them, I said, now, if this was a K-dot road, would you also do this same recommendation? And they said, yes. And I said, okay. So that's the recommendation and that's what we've done. My view, if we follow this and it is what it is, or the next step is a four-way stop. This engineer indicated that he thought a four-way stop, stopping on 43rd Avenue, coming over the bridge, going westbound, might create a problem where they'd get rear-ended or something. over the bridge, going westbound, might create a problem where they'd get rear-ended or something like that, westbound traffic. I don't know that I agree with that, but it's either what we have now or four-way stop. That's the only two things left. And right now, what we've done is what license engineer recommended to do, and he says that the intersection's safe.
So is the concern about the four-way stop, is there kind of an elevation lowering as you come westbound and you stop, like cars going west wouldn't see the stopped car at the intersection, is that...
I think the biggest problem is, is the person stopped at 43rd Avenue coming from the north wouldn't see traffic coming from the east over the bridge. What you say could also be the case, but I think it's traffic pulling out in front of the westbound traffic is what I would think the problem would be. And that's because there's a hump in the bridge. And that's also because of the bridge rail is high there. It's also because over the railroad, there's a tall fence there. All those eliminate seeing what you'd normally see.
And just to be clear, Public Works didn't design this bridge, it was done by a third-party.
That's correct.
So it sounds like you're going to continue to watch it closely. Is that where we're at?
Well, we've done what engineering told us to do, and we'll watch it and hope that there's not an accident. Like I said, on the old bridge, there was a stop sign coming from the west. And right now, to fix it, it would be unfortunate to have a four-way stop, but that's the only other solution if this is not acceptable.
And the opinion of the engineer is that the four-way stop may just create a different risk, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to relay it because I was at the Bueller School Board District Meeting last night, and it came up there. Number one, they were very appreciative of all the work that the county's done on that bridge. It saved probably hundreds of vehicles, a 10-minute drive around. So they were very thankful of your work done and the work you did to get it done ahead of schedule. And so they were not ungrateful at all, they were very thankful. But a few of them continue to express some concern. Some of that I know is just something new, but I would just appreciate you continuing to watch it closely.
When the engineer looks at this, he's looking at if everybody aligns by the speed, everybody goes up to the stop sign, takes time, looks and stuff, that it should be safe. Now, that's based on everybody doing everything right, which...
Doesn't always happen.
Doesn't always happen, no matter what we do.
Well, I just wanted to relay that, and thank you, Don. Is there anything else on that? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. That's, we're going to discuss what the commissioners want to discuss, in my opinion. County Commission Salary Discussion, Commissioner Sellers, I believe that's, you brought the subject up, and so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on September 28th, I requested the placement of the attached resolution that's in your packet. The resolution addresses a change in commissioner pay beginning in 2023 if and only if the voters of Reno County approve a ballot measure that would increase the size of the governing body from three to five at that point in time. Our current pay is $18,000 a year. The proposal with the resolution would change that pay for each commissioner to $10,800. Thus, if we have five commissioners, the amount of expenditure by the county for commission pay would be the same as it is now, if the public votes to go to five commissioners on November 2nd. You can make a case for this any way you want to visit about it. There's a lot of counties that pay their county commissioners a lot more than our present $18,000 a year, some of them in the 50s and even higher than that in some cases. I have a problem with commission pay when I look back and I see people on city commissions that receive no pay whatsoever, zero pay, people on school boards that receive no pay. They're all doing a similar job as we do, I think with equal energy to do a good job for the public. County commissions in history have been paid. I think that stems from the fact that years ago, the county commission was the administrator of the county. The commission would come to the courthouse three or four, five times maybe a week to do the business. They were in charge of the department heads of the county and obviously spent maybe a half-time job working for the county. And I think that's the reason why pay has been in the process for a commission. Back in 1998, the Reno County Commission elected to go a different route. And instead of having the commissioners do the administrative part of the county, they made the decision to hire a professional county administrator. I personally believe that that was a prudent call. The business of the county is beyond some of us normal citizens. It takes people that are trained in public administration, such as our president administrator. We've had three administrators since that time, and it seems to me that during that time, we've become a much more professional organization. With that hiring of a professional administrator, the time of the county commission to perform its role has been reduced. I think our job has changed. The other commissioners might not share that our job has changed, but it's the job of the county administrator now to administrate and manage the county. It's our job, as I see it, to be more like a board of directors advising the county administrator on his role and what we feel the priorities. Commissioner Friesen just brought up, we need the county administrator to bring us information on water districts. That's the role of the county commission, not to manage the daily operation. And so I think that due to the reason that I think that other citizens are doing public work for the governments, whether it's the school board or a board of trustees at the community college or the city councils, I think it's prudent to consider this resolution. And so I make the motion that we consider Resolution 2021-24 for approval.
I'd second the motion.
The motion's seconded, discussion?
I feel like, Mr. Chairman, you should go next. I feel like I'm somewhere in between the two of you, and maybe I can, I don't know if you go next.
You take a lot under your thinking, don't you, before knowing? Well, I appreciate your consideration, Commissioner Sellers. And we agree on lots of things. I don't happen to agree with this particular item because of the time involved. I still have lots of time involved, and I think you do too, and I think Commissioner Friesen does. In order to advise and learn what the citizens are wanting, interested in, and so forth, means we have to get out and visit and communicate with those folks. I know the first time I went out to Western Reno County, and I wasn't even a commissioner at that time, the comment was made, well, you're the first one from the county or the city to come out here and ask questions and learn and see what's going on. I know myself, I kept track of the time and the mileage and the meetings at least that I spent for the first three and a half years of being a commissioner until the COVID came about. And I averaged 300 miles a month and one and a quarter meetings a day, average, to represent the people and to learn and to do my job. Now, I realize with five commissioners, the mileage probably won't change any, but with appropriate administration and appropriate having more people to share those jobs, that meetings will probably go down. But I have not, I've absorbed all those fuel costs and vehicle costs myself, rather than come in and get a county car and do that. You could say, yes, why didn't you do that? But it was still, it's still a cost of the county, regardless of whether I use their vehicle or mine. And when it comes time to the big events like Ken's Association of Counties, yes, that's paid by the county. As I look around and I've visited at Ken's Association of Counties, when I first came on the commission at the educational part, the first meetings, I sat around the table of two different tables, and I asked, how many commissioners do you have? Do you have an administrator? What are you getting, what is your pay schedule? And updated that just a little bit here with regards to some. Reno County, as you mentioned, is 18,000. Seward County, which is smaller, they have five commissioners and an administrator, and they're paid $15,819. Penny County is the same way, smaller county, but they have five commissioners, and their pay is $14,505. Celine County, which a few years ago went from three to five, Celine County has paid And of course, Butler County, who is, I'm not proposing at all this, but they are paid the same situation, $32,539. Franklin County has five, and they're paid 22,625. Not that we, Reno County, has to be exactly like every other county, but I feel that if we lower this too much, we are limiting very much who would be serious about being a county commissioner, because it's a lot, it's more work than a lot of people, and it's an eighty, you mentioned it, I think, earlier in one of your comments, it's about an $80 million budget. There's a lot more time than just going to meetings. There's time studying the budget, studying what's going on, and learning every day. And I imagine most of us that have served on city council here, and it's a whole different ballgame being on a county than it is a city commission. And so that's some of the reasons why I prefer to stay at this level, regardless of whether there's three or five. The job description won't change that much whether there's three or five.
So I agree with a lot of what both of you said. I disagree a little bit with Commissioner Sellers on that this job is similar as, say, a city council position or a school board member. I was surprised at the volume of work as I took on this job that is required. I think it's a lot like an iceberg situation where the public sees us for two to three hours every couple of weeks, and they think that's what we're paid for. There is a huge amount of time underneath that iceberg that I spend, and I think you guys spend pretty much daily, working on county issues. So I think it's just, it's natural for people to think that, you know, they come in for three hours and get paid, you know, what we do, which is, I think, a reasonable amount, generally speaking. And I agree with Commissioner, Chairman Hurst, in that this potentially could preclude certain individuals who are otherwise very suited and capable of taking this or taking on a challenge like this that happens during the day, that would likely require them to take work off. There are people that would need this pay to take the job. So on the other hand, I agree with some of the other things Commissioner Sellers said about, hey, we have a, there is a little bit of an imbalance here. And I think our boss, the public generally doesn't like us getting paid much. And I don't, like I said, I don't know if it's just that it's hard to conceptualize all of the work involved, or whether they just feel like the value isn't there. I, so in that respect, I think that's the argument that's going to win the day for me, is that if the public, it feels like we're being overly compensated already, and we're suggesting that we increase to five commissioners over three, I think it's reasonable, all things considered, to adopt this resolution to get, I think, the broader goal here, which is if we expand from three to five, we open up the voices through elected persons even greater. We reduce some of the unique challenges associated with three commissioners, which I would argue is a significant factor in some inefficient workload that we have right now. And so I'm willing to make this compromise in the effort to get to five commissioners and make it a better form of government for the people of Reno County. I also wanted to point out, and I'd appreciate the media report this, that the third whereas clause in here says that the change in the number of Reno County Commissioner districts from three to five shall not take effect until it has been approved by the majority of qualified electors of the county therein. And this is the important part, at the general election, which will be held November 2nd, 20, that's not right, 2021, 2022, right?
No.
No, the election. Oh, okay.
The positions would be filled in 2022, but expanding the commission will be decided next month.
Right. Have we, so that doesn't answer my question. The question keeps coming up, when this will be decided, if we go from three to five? five? And I think we addressed it in a couple of meetings.
I think there's no definitive answer until if it passes, then the governor has some control over this, isn't that correct?
Yes.
In other words, they could, she could make, the governor could make us go through that special election come next spring, if it passes. Doesn't have to necessarily, we've kind of all agreed on that we were going to ask the governor to allow the election to be occurred in fall of 2022, rather than have the precinct people of each new district appoint one from each party and then have that special election. But that is out of our hands.
Well, I don't think that's true. I think the, well, I know, I've read the statute, and I think the concern of some people is that the governor would appoint the two new commissioners. That is incorrect.
Yes.
Is that right?
The governor does not make the appointment.
Right. So then the question is, what happens? And there's two routes. One route is it goes to the next general election, which would be in November of 2022, which is where I got lost here. The second is, there's a special election in which the.
I think so. You're talking about filling the positions. You're correct. If you're talking about expanding the commission, that's up to the voters at an election that you call, and you've asked for it to be this November.
No, I'm going off on a rabbit trail here, and I apologize, but it's an important question that keeps coming up, the question of how the vacancies are filled. So there's two options, which I want, I want the public to understand. Neither one involves the governor choosing who those people are. Is that right?
Correct, just the method.
So the governor, with consultation with us.
Right.
Will decide the method, right?
That's correct.
The methods, there's two choices.
Right.
You getting all this?
Well, okay. Would you, permission to ask a question? Chairman of Mr. Friesen? So what I think you're trying to get at, just so I report it correctly, is there will be an election, the only question is when?
Yes, and how? Because there, and I appreciate you clarifying, the how is, there's either a general election, which everybody's familiar with, what we're going through in November, or there's a special election, in which what Commissioner Chairman Hearst said, the committees get to elect a person. There's also an option for people to petition their own person outside of the committee.
Forgive me, I'm going to ask a follow-up of the county councillor, if you don't mind. So Joe, as you understand the statute, who pays for the special election, if there's a special election, instead of doing it at the general?
County does.
So apologies to the commissioners for that bunny trail. I thought it was important to address, but notwithstanding that, I think this, you both have very valid points across the board. I think, again, the thing that is swaying me is this compromise to the public that there has to be some reduction in workload, and we don't want to increase costs to the public to get from three to five. So I would be in support of the motion.
Chairman, I'd like to visit with county councillor a minute. The way I understand that Joey explained it to us is that the, if the voters approve going from three to five, the governor, and correct me if you explained it differently, the governor, in consultation with the county commission, makes a decision on whether it's a special election or at the next general election. And I believe you stated that there was another county that went through this process, and their desire was to do it at the general election, and the governor went along with that, isn't that correct?
I can't recall what their preference was, except I know that the governor followed their preference.
Their preference.
And I think that is generally the perception in the governor's office, that I can't necessarily predict, but if past indicators are true, and I think the county clerk has communicated with that office, that it is expected that the governor consults with the county commission and then.
And I think it's.
And follows, and follows the recommendation.
I might be overstating this, but it seems like to me it's our general consensus of this group, that we're better served by waiting until the next general election to allow anybody to run for these positions that so might want to run for these two new positions. Would you agree with that, Commissioner Hearst? Thank you.
And I would agree too. I wanted to make note, there, anybody can run in the special, too. There's an option to petition, you just have to get a five percent. It's sectioned, I'll just pull it up here, since there seems to be questions on this. Why it's not pulling up, sorry. I want to, I want to get it right, just give me, give me a minute. So it's KSA 19203A subsection C, independent candidates may be nominated by petition of less than five percent of the qualified electors within the county commission district. You in agreement?
I don't recall that. I don't, I just don't recall. I thought that if they had a special election, that the candidates were nominated by the major political parties. I know that's the case, and probably because of the time element involved, using that special election would be, you know, within three months or so, four months. But if there is a process for other people to be nominated, I think perhaps you just described that.
Yeah.
I don't know who determines the sufficiency of the petition or how that works, but.
When you describe the subsection B, the county chairperson of each political party within 15 days, not more than 25, after the governor's declaration, shall nominate a candidate. And then subsection C, as independent candidates may be nominated by petition of not less than five percent of the qualified electors within the county commission district. Any such petition shall be filed with the county election officer within 25 days of the governor's declaration.
That's interesting, I haven't read that. Thank you. I have one more comment to make. I think in such a hurry to get five commissioners, that we will end up possibly, very possibly, limiting good candidates for a county commission. And I'm as tight as anybody when it comes to spending money, but I really believe that you go to this, that you have a very good chance of limiting who would be interested in spending their time for this job. It's pretty doggone important. Any other comments? Vote on Resolution 2021-24, county commission salary, in the event of five commissioners are elected, correct? Roll call.
We need a motion.
We have a motion.
We had a motion in a second.
It was so long ago.
Sorry.
We were waiting for you to update us on this. Good information, Daniel.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearst?
No.
All right. County Administrator Report. Let's not be that important. Next leaving. Maybe you've already sent him the PowerPoint or whatever.
Well, in my report, in the packet, I have the monthly department reports and then the financial reports, monthly reports. Any questions on those from the commission?
Yes. On the budget reports, what is Internal Services? I struggled with understanding that account.
Those are kind of like a, kind of way of pass-through, but maintenance and auto department use that for when they buy things and then charge them out to other departments, kind of a pass-through.
Okay. So it's like the supply department buying in bulk and then charging the other departments for items?
Things like that, or buying autos, probably the easier one to look at when Kyle buys a bunch of, does different things to vehicles, and then may charge, charges, and that's where the reimbursements to pay for it.
Second comment on the monthly department reports, and again, I'm enjoying reading those. I thought it was good that the HR department is reporting that we are down to only 15 openings and that we're having more applications than we did a few months ago. So it sounds like that they're getting caught up on employees.
Some departments are doing better than others on applicants, but overall, we're getting a few more applicants. Any other questions? Financial reports, we did make a little bit of a change, instead of having two different reports, one that shows the cash balance changes, and one that shows the year-to-date expenditures and revenues. We put the, at the end of each fund, I'll go to the general fund, we put, we added those numbers here on this report, so you may have to look at one report to see that beginning of the year, the beginning fund balance of the general fund, for example, is 14.9 million. With the revenues, expenditures, year-to-date, the current ending balance is 19.9 million. So we just put it all in one report to try to help simplify looking at these reports for the commission to see where, how our standing is at each fund level. Any? Any other questions on those two reports? Kind of, in case Commissioner Friesen has a question. I can see him reading them, so just before I go to my next slide.
I had a question, I forgot it, so.
If you think, I have, I was going to also mention that planning commission appointments, we have that open. Anyone can apply for the planning commission spots. We have two spots that are open. As already been mentioned, Lisa French terms out at the end of this year, so her position needs, there needs to be an appointment probably before the end of the year, so they take over in January of this coming year. And then Bruce Buchanan is also, has left, and he's left immediately. His, I believe, is, he lives in an incorporated area, Lisa lives in an unincorporated areas, area. At the current time, we have five applicants so far. I believe three of them live outside a city, and two live inside a city. So I'm just kind of giving you an update, but we'll continue to receive applications probably through this month, and then bring to the commission in November, the first meeting in November for discussion. Any questions on that?
How is it, how are they normally selected when you have more than, what's the normal process?
The bylaws states that the majority of the members have to be in the unincorporated area. So the bylaws do not set a process. I believe the history of Reno County has maybe changed a little bit, but in the past, from what I've been told, if a member, for example, if Lisa steps down, if that member is in Commissioner Hearst's district, that commissioner tries to, they try to find someone in that same district, commissioner district. That doesn't have to be done, I think that's kind of what has been done in the past, or if it's a incorporated area, the commission member, maybe that has the majority of Hutchinson, looks for a member. That's just my understanding, but the recommended process to get the applications for at least the chair, if not the full commission, to review all the applicants, and at a meeting, discuss the process you guys want to take. If there's any that you see with their applications that you want to nominate, or if you want to interview them. The interview would be in a public setting like this, you could interview, come have them, attend a meeting, state why they feel they're the best choice, and then make a decision.
That's the way it's been done before.
Last year, at the end of the year, there was a member that had stepped down, it was in Commissioner Sellers' district, so I believe we, Commissioner Sellers, or the commission appointed someone that lived in that district.
Are they equally divided amongst the districts?
Three, two, and two. It's the way it's been divided for a long time.
But they require approval by the board, so it's.
Yes. It's your decision, it's the full force decision.
That's our seven members.
My only thought is that, you know, I just, I hate for there to be some sort of impartiality related to the significant agenda in front of the commission in the next.
I don't think that's ever been done before, when we looked at applicants.
And that, well, not that issue, but there is a concern, I know by the planning department and public works, with one of the members stepping down immediately, there's only six members, an even number, that will be looking at any cases during October, November, and December. I'm working with, also with GIS to kind of get a map, just so you guys can kind of see the representation of the list of the members, the people that are applying, you can kind of see on a map of what districts, what areas of the county they.
County Administrator realizes this, and I think we realize this, these are extremely important appointments, it takes a lot of time. At the last planning meeting, when they were doing a case, there was public people saying that you elected people aren't doing what we want, that people don't understand that they're appointed, not elected. There was also someone there that said, you people are being paid to do this, we We want you to do the right thing. The public certainly doesn't understand the role of the Planning Commission and them of giving their time for the betterment of the county.
I think that was the same way that we looked at when we had to appoint someone to the commission. That we looked at their qualifications and their background, correct, Mr. Sellers? When we appointed someone, we looked.
To the Planning Commission?
Yeah, to the Planning Commission.
You said commission, and you, I thought you were talking about us, the Planning Commission. It's pleasing to me that we have five citizens willing to serve.
So my, I remember my question.
Okay.
Is the district attorney satisfied with our progress and the mitigation of his moisture issues on the fifth floor? Is it the fifth or the fourth?
He's on the fifth. To my knowledge of what we've done at this point, yes. But we do have bigger plans once the dome is completed to make sure that the moisture comes in and to also address some of that, those other offices that have more of a mildew type of smell or feel.
The diversion office was.
That's, yeah.
Not good, in my opinion.
That's the one that had the closet that probably, yes.
Like a, yeah, like a, right. So I suppose if he's okay with progress, then I don't, I don't need to be concerned about it.
All right. Wanted to give a quick update on the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. We did create, or Lori did, our information specialist did create, or communication specialist created a page on our website, just so anyone in the public and who is a commission can look at the ARP, what every entity in Reno County is receiving from these funds, the use of the funds, which I think you're familiar with that. And then we're going, we have links on here to rallyreno.org to get the information that the ARPA stakeholders have been working on. That was, where I was going with that also is so far, there's 43 meetings that have been scheduled through, I believe, this week. That anywhere from maybe five to 20 or so community members at each meeting has taken part. And so they are getting good responses from the community. They didn't quite meet the 60 meetings, but in the mid 40s, that's pretty good in the amount of time they've turned that around. And once those are complete, which I believe will be the end of this week, once those are complete, then the Kansas State University lead com department will be working on the report to bring back, and they will bring back that report to the county commission and then the city council, hopefully in November or early December.
I might ask, I know the county administrator and I had the opportunity to attend one of those meetings. Have either one of you attended any of those?
I have not.
It was, it was, even with the background that we have, I thought it was very interesting to hear the diversity of ideas and, and how hard our decision is going to be once we receive this input. Going to be, in my opinion, one of our harder tasks to appropriately allocate these funds.
Then we have, again, we have until the end of 2024 to allocate or earmark the expenditures and then until 2026 to have completion of any projects. The other item that I had, just as a reminder, that the next commission meeting, October 26, is at the Public Works facility. So we will record it and have it, I believe, on YouTube. But the county clerk elections, they will be having trameneering here. So this, this room is not available for that meeting.
I may be traveling and I might have to call in.
Okay, we can set that up.
Randy, on maybe the question for the clerk's office, but when do, when do the mail-in ballots go out?
13th.
13th.
But you have up until the 26th to request a mail-in ballot?
I believe that's on the calendar.
What I believe your election officer said on the radio.
13th tomorrow. Right?
I think that's the day to, last day to register to, to register to vote?
No.
Or is that?
That was yesterday.
That was yesterday, okay, that's okay. You might just.
Could you?
Find out from the clerk real quick that date for.
Thanks. I think the last day to register is today.
I thought it was.
I thought yes.
I thought it was the 13th and then the 15th when advance voting begins.
Begins in person.
In person.
You're going to be traveling, you think you're going to be traveling on the 26th? Should we look at picking another day to have a commission meeting, Dan?
Up to you guys. I, I can try to call in and I'll.
I don't know the agenda right now to see how, you know, if there's a lot of controversial, but a lot of discussion items.
Look at that. Randy, what do you think, Commissioner Sellers? It'd be nice if we were all here, but if we have a big schedule that day, I think it would be good to.
It's much better when everyone's in person. But we can always do a Zoom or a call in for Commissioner Friesen if needed.
Thursday, the Thursday, I don't know, Thursday, the 28th would.
I'll be out of town that day.
You guys just travel too much.
Well.
I can try to keep the agenda live.
I'm sorry, Randy.
Take it offline, see what Randy can negotiate.
I'll work on it and see if we need to change the date or if there's minimal business items on there that can be done, Commissioner Friesen calling in.
I just thought maybe we ought to look at that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
When you asked about the, or the dates for the elections, what was the, Commissioner Sellers, what you?
Well, I think it's hard for the public to understand when the commission doesn't understand these dates. But would, the question was, is voter registration ended?
Today is the last day to register.
Today's the last day. When do the mail-in ballots go out?
Tomorrow.
And I heard you on the radio say you could request a mail-in ballot till?
Up until the 26th.
Right. Does that answer the concerns?
It's like trivia, this is the president.
And then in person starts.
In person will actually begin in here on Friday. Friday, the 15th, yes.
Thank you, Kenneth.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Randy, you and I mentioned, and I think maybe we want to take this up at a different date, that the conversation regarding a potential mayor's meeting, we, we'll work on that. Did you want to?
Right, thank you. I, I meant to mention that in my report, that during the kind of strategic planning discussion this January, the county commission, one of their goals was to start having meetings with the mayors. We're having an annual mayor's meeting to where the mayors were invited to meet with the county commission. Wanted to see if the county commission, if you guys are willing to still get that completed this year and if so, what date, if there's a date that works. And if you would be willing to do it, maybe in an evening, we go to a location. It'd be a public meeting, of course, but invite all the mayors of the various cities inside Reno County to a meeting to where the Reno County Commission will kind of host the meeting, have a very basic agenda, maybe talk about ARPA and whatever items are on the minds of the mayors of the cities.
I think it'd be a good meeting to have.
Is there, are there days, times, weeks that don't work? Since we don't have anything on the agenda, do you want to get it done this year or wait until January? In talking with Chairman Hurst, it'd be nice to get it done this year. I'm not sure how many mayors may be up for election, if there's going to be changes of who's going to be mayor between, if we have a meeting in December and then in January, if it's going to be a different mayor.
That's a good point. Maybe we ought to wait until January, the end of January. It amazes me when we looked at the smaller towns in Reno County, how many have an elected mayor. I just assumed that the council did that, but they're actually elected or they don't?
I think everyone except for Hutch is that way.
Really? That's interesting.
South Hutch isn't elected. They're elected within the council.
Going back to commission dates, I'd be available Monday, the 25th or Wednesday, the 27th. Those help you, Daniel?
What month is that?
This month?
October 25th, you're talking.
No, I'm traveling the first half of the week and you're traveling the last half, it sounds like. You're not available Friday, are you?
No.
What about? The following Tuesday? The second election day?
I will be returning that day. Oh.
The Tuesday on November 2nd, Jackson Swear and I are meeting with the Hutch City Council regarding SCED.
I think Daniel gets to do it by Zoom.
Yep. Okay.
I'll work on a, a day in.
January.
You want to do?
End of January.
Guess we could move it up to the previous week.
So you're thinking in Jan, is that kind of a consensus to do it in January? I'm not sure how many.
A new mayor is not going to, unless they're part of the council, they're not going to have much information.
So do it this year?
I think you just.
I don't think it matters. I don't think it matters.
But I, I think you'd probably get better information before there's a change of the guard.
And if there is a change of the guard, they are kind of tanned.
Sure. Maybe early or.
Early December?
Early December, late November or so. That's fine.
I kind of agree with you. I like to see both the new and the old if they want to come.
Might be good.
What do you think, Commissioner Sellers, though? Okay, if we look at that?
Fine.
Okay.
If you look at the, the week of December 6th, is that, is that kind of, are there days that week?
I'm good.
Yep.
That's way too far out for me. I'm good, too.
Okay.
All right. County commission reports, Daniel?
I think, I think I got, I wanted to deliver the thank you from the Bueller School Board on all the efforts on the bridge. Kind of hit that already and hit, hit the concerns there. So I didn't, not write anything else down, so yield my time. Thank you.
Done?
I am done.
Okay. Commissioner Sellers?
Oh, I'll take his time.
Will you take his time?
Yeah, I'll take his time. I'm, I am personally pleased that we're seeing more items on the consent, consent agenda. I think that that's appropriate. Those are items that we can ask questions if we need to, but can move quickly through because they're items that the county administrator feels is appropriate. And I think it's, we're doing a good job of doing more on that. I guess I want to applaud Public Works for their answer to Commissioner Friesen's concern on the 43rd Street Bridge. You know, Public Works, when they have a question, they get it done. And I, I applaud their efforts. We can't make things perfect, but it sounds like they're concerned and they're trying to do a good remedy. And I can, can, I think that in this short amount of time where they've been to get the answer that they gave Commissioner Friesen today is admirable. The sheriff's still here. He must not have a busy day if he's listening to us. I, I'm glad that we've got the gun range resolved. I'm still very, very disappointed that we weren't able to work out something between the city and the county on the current range. As the public looks at costs of government and so forth, the only way to save these monies is to cooperate. In this case, it didn't work, but we need to move on. So I understand that. Final thing, I'm going to give a pitch to three, three to five here, is we're struggling to get a date that three of us can meet. I think five will help that situation. Part-time commissioners are never all going to be available, but all at the same time every day. And I think that if we have five commissioners, it will help have three or four people in attendance to conduct public business. I, it is hard doing it by Zoom. I've done it a couple of times. Daniel's done it a couple of times. It's hard doing it by Zoom. I appreciate it when we do it that way. But if we had five commissioners and four were here, we would have a better public meeting. And then finally, I would encourage people to vote. The city-county election last two years ago only had a total of, I don't know that number.
79?
7,900 and some odd votes. That's not very good. If, vote the way you feel is correct, but please vote. It's not appropriate to complain if you're not going to vote. I, I, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Your last quote I have used before on the township, you know? Did you vote? No?
Right.
Well, we're doing the best we can, so let us know how that happens. Appreciate that. And regarding three to five, I have stated that it's up to the public. I, I've thought about this for a couple, three weeks, and I, and I was a little disappointed in the brochure that came out. I do not believe increasing commissioners would reduce the likelihood of one individual disrupting the flow of business as well as the inability to act due to conflict of interest. There's still three of us on here, or there will be five, maybe. That still leaves a majority available to descend or approve. And so from that, my standpoint, I was, I mulled this over a long time, decided whether I would say anything or not. But that's, I, disrupting the flow of business, maybe there's two or three out of commission of five that might disrupt the business, too. So, but, and it does do the conflict of interest, just like I showed today, that the meeting could still go on. But that was a comment that I just felt I needed to make. Agree or disagree, that's a comment I felt I needed to make. And I would second your idea that get out and vote. That's the way our democratic republic works. Inform yourself, take some time to inform yourself. And, and so I second, second that comment Commissioner Sellers did. comment, Commissioner Sellers, that when you have only 5% or 10% of the people or 12% of the people that make the decisions for the other 80%, I don't think that's using your citizenry very well. I think that's all the comments I have, so.